Sam check, Sam check, Sam check. Sam check, Sam check, Sam check.
The RNI were born at the education meeting for Thursday, February 4, 2021. We'll be called to order at 5:34 PM. Ms. Beckavitz?
Here.
Dr. Darr?
Here.
Ms. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. DeMori?
Here.
Dr. Lawyer?
Here.
Mr. Garvis?
Here.
And Mr. Bolinsky?
Here. All right. Do we have any additional items or changes to the agenda?
No additional items or changes to the agenda, no.
Very good. All right. We do have a consent agenda this evening. May I ask for a motion to adjourn the consent agenda?
I move that the consent agenda be accepted as presented.
Dr. Darr?
Aye.
Ms. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. DeMori?
Yes.
Dr. Lawyer?
Aye.
Mr. Bolinsky?
Aye.
Mr. Garvis?
Aye.
Ms. Beckavitz?
Aye.
Susan, do we have anybody on the Zoom?
No.
All right. And Kane, do you have any?
No. I've been sent no public comments. I will note that the website is down. So we just found out that, I don't know when I came to see Tim, about it, maybe five-ish. So I did send out an email to all parents and staff, the link to the YouTube and to the Zoom, just in case. And I did put it on Twitter. And I don't know if you had a chance to put it on the Facebook post. But so, yeah, we might have missed some people tonight, so we apologize for that. But just late notice. And I think Tim said all the other websites, like he knows of a run of that company or that.
Correct.
So clearly on their end. And we'll just make the best of it.
Okay. Thank you for that. So I'll give a report.
Yes. So my particular report will be, you know, a little short. You know, I will say, we are closer to a mass vaccination for new tier township educational staff. I won't say details and dates because, you know,
Don't change that.
We're always waiting for one phone call that has to be had. But I've been told that there is an approval by an entity that will make it possible for us nearby to get our staff vaccinated. The goal is to set dates that would have both vaccinations done before spring break, of course. And our hope is that we will by tomorrow have a sense of the dates and more details. It's with a group that's done other mass vaccinations, so we're just hopeful. And that's the best we can do right now. I don't want to say anything else. It will take a lot of cooperation among the new tier superintendents, which we're glad to work with each other. So my fingers are crossed on that. I will say, as of January 28th, when I took a survey of staff, at that point, 36% of the respondents, there were about 106 respondents, 36% had already received their first shot. And another 10% had scheduled their first shot. So that's very promising. And it's a real testament to our staff because it's the Wild West out there, folks. That's all there is to it. And I give a lot of credit to our staff. We're communicating with each other. We've had team, team, great teams go together, in some cases, you know, anything, right? But they're being very supportive of each other. And I think that's important because this rollout has set up the opposite scenario. It has set up a competition-like scenario, which is not how you would ever plan to do this. Markets work great for things, but not that thing. And so I feel very badly because markets are designed to have winners and losers, and you shouldn't have that with vaccines. So nonetheless, our staff's done great. They've been very patient, very, just really humbled that, because I'll be honest, there have been other superintendents to whom frustration has been expressed in maybe unprofessional ways by staff who are that upset. And I understand that upset. I totally get it.
But is that about what?
Superintendent, but not getting vaccinated.
No.
But it is absolutely not within our control. And I will tell you, not one staff member has done anything but professional. I am supportive, inquisitive, but just fantastic. So I'm really humbled to work with everybody on that. So that's kind of my, you know, my end of the report for where that is right now. And then, of course, I have some metrics and some other things and the regular kind of thing. Go on to metrics.
Okay.
Okay. So the metrics report, you can see in the board notes. The numbers are looking better. We have just three trade categories that would indicate remote, five indicating hybrid, and up to seven are modified onsite daily. And that's really a function of the positivity rates continuing to go down. The incidence rates are still higher than we would like. But nonetheless, we are getting in safer and safer territory. And the big outstanding questions are, now that the mitigation's been opened up for things like youth sports and some other activities, will that drive the number back up? And then the wild part is this variant that's out there and not really knowing if the role it's playing. But I do say this with absolute confidence. Our mitigation steps will not have a problem because of the variant, right? Because they're designed to, you know, with masking, shielding, distance, and the schedule, we won't have any further problem because of the variant. If the community rate goes up because of that, then we're back into a different question. But I feel confident what we're doing inside the school to respond to this problem. So we're all hoping that those numbers continue to go down. And that vaccinations, as they roll up, play a greater and greater role in reducing the rate itself.
So I'm happy to answer any questions about the metrics.
Kane, on the new variant, when they talk about a higher factor of contagiousness, is any of the research or anything you're hearing talking about the distance not being enough? You know, we're already hearing about how many masks, what kind of mask.
Yeah.
So when you say that our mitigation in place is enough, are there things you are being told we need to add to that?
I'm not being told that yet. I'm not being told anything about the distance. Density and crowds might be an issue. But again, if you're wearing a mask and you're not within six feet for more than 15 minutes.
So that's still kind of a...
Yeah. We have been sent and given by CDC and IDPH no new guidance related to mitigation. So certainly, in fact, they did get a note that, yeah, two masks, there's research going out that two masks are more effective. But the guidance on it has said everybody should be wearing two masks and you should do this. Because remember, when they say research, they're talking about like one or two studies at this point. So they're often not issuing guidance on that basis yet. So, and I don't know frankly, trying to enforce a two-mask rule. Our compliance is fantastic. But checking for two masks, is it like actually a different logistical issue? So I don't know that we would end up going there unless the guidance was very clear that we should be doing that. Any other questions about metrics or COVID? You did mention distance. I mean, I will tell you, you know, our medical advisor has said with our staffs, five feet is acceptable with our shields and the other things. I know the University of Chicago medical team has given written guidance for the lab school that they can go to five feet. It should be noted that the guidance that the CDC uses and IDPH has adopted is it should be six feet with masks when possible to operate school. So there are schools out there that are operating under a less than six-foot rule in certain cases, certain places. I'm not going to comment on their rates or what I know about how infection is gone because I couldn't possibly sit here and attribute something to that. But I will tell you that we're trying to get in touch with a few of these people to see what are they actually saying to the lab school? Like what is the written guidance to understand it? And then we're talking about will five feet even make a difference in how we could operate school? So in other words, it might not be a big enough foot difference to change what we would do. And Dr. Bill DeMoria says while five feet is acceptable, he doesn't feel more than 16 in a standard classroom. And Dr. Billamoria says while five feet is acceptable, he doesn't feel more than 16 in a standard classroom is good. And that's not a distance rule, that's a density issue. So again, five feet might not actually take us anywhere operationally different. But we're doing some math on that and some measurements, so.
Especially as long as we can't open windows and.
Right, yeah, so this is why, you know, I've gotten a couple emails, like, why are you even waiting to consider it? Well, that's one of the big ones. There's two big reasons, vaccinations and weather. And it would help us tremendously in the confidence with which we could open school and not have staff in a different place, you know, at risk particularly. And students with the windows open ventilation.
So Kane, and I mean, it sounds like you're getting this information, so I'd say a question I probably have in mind two weeks from now would be, we keep reading that the new variant is more contagious. If the guidelines are to stay the same, what does more contagious mean? That's out there, you'll be the first to hear it, so.
Yeah, I mean, we'll certainly be looking at the guidance for that. Everybody's said kind of that thing, but nobody said, therefore you should or should not do the following things. And at the same time, the CDC came out last week with a very clear statement of, you know, kids should be in school. So they also don't sit there and say, well, they should be in school on this model or that model or that model. They say they should be in school with the following things in place, right, which is what we do there.
But I'm glad they have a study that tells us two masks are better than one.
Yeah, I mean, that's going to be helpful. So we'll continue to monitor. I do think our plan to try to do something different after spring break is still the right thing for, you know, the reasons we've cited in the earlier memo, but also vaccinations and just guidance, the guidance changes, so we're going to continue to monitor that. Any other questions about metrics or COVID? The next thing we have up is enrollment report. The last time we gave you one was in September 2020. Sounds like a really long time ago. And so this has been updated, and you can see where the numbers are. And obviously, the single biggest increase is attributed to preschool, because as kids age in, we see that happen typically. So I don't know if there are any more questions around that. I think I did have one note. Yeah, just so you know that based on this, this is average class sizes, range from thirteen point two as the lowest at first grade right now, to twenty-three point two as the highest in sixth grade. Now, those are averages. They work very differently based on who's chosen remote, who's chosen hybrid. I think we have a hybrid section of twenty-seven, maybe, higher?
Hybrid section or a?
I'm sorry, a remote section.
Correct, twenty-seven.
Yeah, twenty-seven, so obviously those numbers are accurate. But those are numbers to consider in light of if we go onsite every day, how do we make those numbers work divisionally?
What was the grade that had three sections prior to COVID? Was that second grade?
Current first grade.
For the current first grade?
Yeah. And that was one of those marginal issues based on how many chose remote. It didn't leave so few that we could go down to just two sections of onsite, so.
So am I understanding this correctly, that we've had nine students enroll in preschool since the beginning of the year? Nine additional? Were we at twenty from eleven at the beginning of the year? Because I'm confused if that's.
I don't think they have numbers, but we definitely, off the top of my head, I can count six kids that have just enrolled within the last month.
It also could be that, remember, preschool starts late. And when we gave you the September numbers, we probably were pulling off, I have to look at the actual date we pulled. We put it in at the end of August, so we could have gotten some trickle-ins that we didn't really think of as new, right?
Yeah, because there's basically been about fourteen kids added to the district and nine.
I have them at preschool, yeah.
Which is good, I mean.
Yeah, from the beginning of the year, it's good. I mean, remember, we had a bubble class that graduated, so the number should have gone down, but the degree at which they've stayed the same or gone up a little is actually good. Because, you know, there's a lot, a lot of people are looking for alternatives. They don't feel the current model is working. I know some people have done that, but I think our numbers are solid.
We've probably had movement of people from the city out to the summer as well.
Yeah, we've had, I'm not sure, I mean, I don't know, I didn't ask Jess and Matt to come with numbers, so, you know.
Because if there was a swap, we don't see it.
Yeah, we don't see it, yeah, so.
Exactly.
Kristen, is this a max of ten kids a class in preschool under COVID?
We are maxing at ten right now under COVID, yeah.
Great.
Yeah.
Good job, Kristen.
And to be fair, most of these are kids that are aging out of early interventions, so we're happy to have them, but I don't want to take any credit for getting out there and, you know. But I do think they are doing an amazing job with social distancing with three-year-olds, and they look very cute following.
I was gonna say, I see at least one group daily coming in and coming out, they're chipper and happiest can be.
It's fun.
So. Okay, we'll bring one more probably at the end of third quarter, maybe beginning of fourth quarter to give update. I don't anticipate much changing between them. And then the next item is July to December financials. So Beth's here to recap info she did share with the finance committee. You know, Beth can go over, I do want to reiterate just that the fiscal benefits of the new contract won't fully be accrued starting till third, and really the end of the fiscal year you'll see them substantially. And that the first installment of COVID has been received, but it doesn't show up in December. Are we able to start using it, or we've used it and just it won't show up in December? And then the second number, which is ranged everywhere from one hundred and ninety to two hundred and fourteen in reports, we don't actually know yet what we're going to get. We haven't gotten that come through, so. And of course, it looks as if some form of additional aid is going to pass at the federal level. And this is one area where there's actually quite a bit of distance between the two parties' bills, so we'll see what happens with that, but we should anticipate some level of additional funds then also. And with that, Beth, I'll leave it. If you want to go over anything particular in here and then answer questions.
Okay. Just quickly, we're budgeted, we have a deficit budgeted of about a million two for this year, taking out the capital projects fund and the debt service fund. At the end of December, we're about halfway, about six hundred thousand is the deficit. And in terms of revenues and expenditures, we have received and spent about forty-seven percent on both sides. The only other thing I'll add, you know, to kind of highlight is we started our new food service program. We did get two payments in this quarter towards that, so that's good to see, because that's, you know, brand new, and as you know, everybody's getting their lunches, so we've got, I think, seventy-five thousand dollars back from that.
And that's through our regular food service provider?
Correct.
But it's a federal.
It's a federal program.
But we have to use our provider.
Right. And on the expenditure side, really, I would say everything seems to be kind of coming in as expected in this year. And, you know, you might see a little bit more by-line items. Some things are higher, some things are lower. And I'll just give an example, we're doing more contracted services for subs, nurses, custodial than I had in the budget, but then we have less for our own staff in cable. So you see a little bit of that going both ways. And Kane mentioned, we received our first COVID stimulus of about forty-four thousand in January, and we're awaiting to see how much funding we'll get in the second one and also what we can use it for. It's a little bit unclear on that as well, but we've already spent a hundred and sixty thousand, and that doesn't even include the staffing, so we'll definitely welcome those funds when we receive them. And I think that's it. Anybody, they have any questions?
The state tax payments, do we expect that to?
I budgeted for two quarterly payments, and we received in the first six months, two. One was from last year, one was from this year, and we just got at the end of January another quarter's payments, so.
So there are only two behind me?
Yes.
So we'll see, so we'll see better than expected revenue under that line.
Right, that's a little bit higher.
Unless they pull back other funds.
Right, some other things are a little lower, but we'll see in the next quarter. Like you said, hopefully we'll be able to actually see some of the savings from the contract, because those kicked in in December and January.
Beth, I'm sure I should know this, but you manage this budget on an accrual basis with all these late payments? Or do you?
These, on our day-to-day, month-to-month, everything's cash basis, and then when we do the audit, we convert everything to accrual basis.
I mean, so the financial appropriation to the stated accrual basis, so.
This is a maddening way to run a budget.
I don't know, I can keep track of the cash a lot better than accrual.
No, I agree, but when you don't know when the money's coming to.
Yeah, when you don't know the money, yeah. I mean, I think it's a state that we just get used to, like.
Uncertain.
Yeah, I mean, remember, we operated without a state budget for, some of you are here when there was no state budget for three years. I mean, that was really painful to plan for under those circumstances, and very hard. One thing I think, Beth, I don't know if you could comment on, even though it's not reflected in here, do you want to just talk about the benefits and the changes in selection based on the contract?
Yeah, so based on the contribution rate changes in the teacher contract, we're projecting on this year's, this new year 2021, probably a savings around thirty-eight, forty thousand dollars. And then that's reflects six months, so moving forward, that'd be closer to eighty thousand dollars. And that's either between people move to other plans or people stayed on the plan that they had and they are paying a little bit more.
That's half a percentage point. That's not bad for that, so.
It's been years, and we haven't been hearing numbers go down.
Well, one did anyway, so, you know, and the other thing I did, a side note that I want to point out, I should have mentioned it after personnel, I think she was on there tonight, right? Was, you know, Beth mentioned that we've been paying more for contract services but less for others. The nurse is one of those examples, but tonight you did approve the hiring of Val Green as our nurse now, so she'll come off of contract and be paid by us, and so you'll see that now shift. You know, in order to quote-unquote pay off mat, so we had to pay off the small amount, but we did feel it was worth that to get her out and secure her as our employee, because we've had a trial with her since September, and have been very happy, glad to have her aboard. She's a source of stability, and we're really looking forward to having her when she's there. Every day, building relationships with families and kids, which is one of the important roles that a good nurse does. And so we're excited to have Val aboard, and then you'll see, so you'll see the finances shift back on that. Any other questions for Beth?
Keep that.
Thanks, Beth.
Thanks. Okay, then the next item is spring break survey results, and there's more to this memo than that. It's a late addition, and I did revise it, so I will go through it in some detail to make sure that it's covered. And then it's really designed to elicit board discussion. As you'll see, there's no decision that's been made yet, and I will tell you, I'm not the only superintendent in that vote at this point about some specifics, but I wanted to outline kind of the context and the circumstances related to spring break. And so we did send staff and families, you know, some basic questions that I outlined there. And then on the bottom of page one, you can see the responses from staff. And so I just organized it around those who indicated they were traveling for spring break, and you can see the breakdown there. How many of those said they changed plans if quarantine is in place? And the reason that's there is because at the time, we weren't a hundred percent, I don't think staff's a hundred percent, of the role of vaccines and everything, too. And then I asked, how many of you might do it, or you don't know, was really the thing. I don't know if I'm going to do it, I just put that as they may travel, and so you can see the numbers there. And so I just calculated from that the number of subs we might need based on these responses. And it's a substantial number. And so there are some things I'll talk about, and then there's some things related to personnel bargaining that could go in close session related to this item potentially. So if you flip the page, then I just printed, I showed the graphs for the parent guardian results, and we did get as many as we had hoped, but we got two hundred responses. And so you can see thirty percent of the two hundred indicated they will travel. And then, you know, I think that's eighteen, nineteen percent said they don't know. And then out of two hundred, you know, fourteen percent, twenty-eight people said I would change my plans if I go out for quarantine. So this is based on two hundred responses. If you were to really extrapolate it, then it's a much bigger number of students who would be out and quarantining. So the analysis, I just do point out the sub issue down there, there are some other caveats to that, and the potential number of onsite learners that would miss learning throughout the two weeks. That's a range, that's an estimate based on this. So we still have to come up with a direction related to spring break, and I kind of outline things here. And what I put here is really, kind of describes what other districts are doing or contemplating doing. And I might have some different kind of verbiage or approaches to it. But the first one here is one that I've discussed with other superintendents in the township, and we've actually talked to a test provider, North Shore Clinical Labs, that provides free COVID testing. We've had a long phone call with them. We feel very confident we would use them. Blenko Park District uses them, Loyola used them for a two-day episode. And so one option is that you would go remote from the fifth to the ninth, but on the eighth and the ninth, you would run a testing clinic and then bring back on the twelfth anyone who was negative. That would still be a voluntary test clinic, right? So you'd say, hey, if you travel, come and get a test and you can be sure, and then you're good. And if you, and we would actually open it up to anybody. And so then you could bring everybody back on the twelfth and thirteenth. I did put an asterisk there that staff could be required to test with a change in board policy and possibly impact targeting. You can actually require everybody to test if you want. You could say, well, why don't I just require the people who traveled to test? Because you can't, you won't know actually who traveled or not. Glanco, through a different provider, set up this model of testing everybody after two weeks of remote after winter break. Then they tested everybody before coming back. Said it went very well, but they, I was told they would not do that model again, that way, right? They were, you know, they're testing everybody, requiring it, and doing it for what they got out of it. In other words, they didn't see that as a worthwhile endeavor.
Have you found a lot of cases?
No, right, that's one of the issues. They did not find a lot of cases. So the other reason is they had to conduct a lot more of the work themselves. This lab really conducts almost everything themselves. You just have to get certain informational pieces to them, and they run almost the whole thing. You just give them the space and some equipment, not testing equipment, but, and then they run it, and they've done this very successfully. So this is one approach that can be taken. You know, the other one that is, that has been taken in various places to various degrees is simply dropping the trail of quarantine guidance altogether. In other words, treating it only as guidance, taking an official position that it doesn't, doesn't play a role in anything and going forward. So there's some caveats to this. One district is doing this with the teachers but not with the families. And kind of begs the question there.
The teachers are getting vaccinated.
They're doing it right now, so. And then other districts, you know, are making the argument, well, they're getting vaccinated, which I understand that argument, it does protect the teachers. The issue is that transmission and vaccination don't actually go, so the actual. The issue is that transmission and vaccination don't actually go, so the actual scientific rationale, it has a common sense rationale to it, it doesn't have a scientific rationale to it. Um, but like I said, there are districts that are following this path. They've made a decision that we're gonna take it just not even as guidance anymore. We're not gonna require it as part of our screening to come back to school. Um, and, um, we're just gonna go on our way and see what happens. Now, some of those districts have surveillance testing in place, so they see that as their mitigation factor, right? Um, I do point out that, you know, that decision is just a decision, there's no, there's no health department guidance out there at all that, that points to this. Um, I did check with, uh, our, our citizen who works at Northwestern because I wanted to find out, what do you do with your staff, their essential staff? And that person says, nope, they're, they have to, um, quarantine. And, uh, for them, they take personal time off to do it. So with us though, uh, it would be sick days, uh, for staff who did that, they had to take sick days. Um, FICRA runs out March thirty-first. Um, I have to look at the contract to see if the memorandum of understanding allows the, uh, staff member to access the COVID sick bank for this purpose or not. I have to look and see because it's tied to FICRA. Um, and it doesn't mean that there would be enough days in there, as by the way, to do that for people who wanted to. Um, so the default would be that if you did this model, um, and you were, but you required staff to, or I'm sorry, you did the third model, that's if you required staff to quarantine, it's sick days. And then the third, the third one is down there, which is, we start back on the fifth. Um, and if you're out, you quarantine, you take the sick day, um, and, and we have to figure out what to do, right? So we have to, you know, we just kind of, which I know two districts right now, they don't actually have a plan. They're just saying this is what we're gonna do. Um, but they don't actually have a plan for, like, what happens when all this numbers, staff numbers don't show up. Um, so what I would say is, you know, that, that seems an interesting proposition. Um, and, you know, I know in, in discussing with the, with the advent team, you know, obviously the clearest, safest, most consistent path is we go remote for the week, test, come back on the fifth. Um, I will talk in a minute about some other potential calendar issues that we could work on with that that might make it work differently and potentially better in some people's minds. But I just wanted to outline that and just answer questions and see what people wanted to know about because you're gonna hear a lot of different approaches in the coming weeks to how this issue's being handled. And so I wanted to kind of get it out there and talk about it and then let you know when we do make a decision, which won't be too long, you know, this is what's underlying, yes.
You have mentioned in the past that our insurers would have an issue if we did certain things. Have we found out if we, does it change the designation, would that create a hazard?
Um, I think we would be more liable, but it's not clear that we would have violated, um, toward anything related toward immunity, right? A willful and wanton thing because, um, yeah, I've gotten no evidence that it's willful and wanton. Um, that doesn't mean you can't get sued for it. And let's remember, we don't have COVID coverage, nobody has COVID coverage. It's all under our current, you know, standard. So what I would say it does is, it might open you up for increased lawsuits. I don't know if it really opens you up for actual increased liability, nobody's told me that. Um, and I'm assuming that the other districts that have skirted this have, you know, um, gotten the okay from their attorney. And I've heard nothing otherwise, only that it's guidance and here's what you should or shouldn't do. Um, obviously, the more you follow guidance that's published by health departments, the safer you are in terms of liability.
And have you, have the superintendents asked the health department to provide more guidance on this issue? Because everyone's in the same boat here.
Thank you for bringing that up. Yes, just today, in our, in our weekly meeting, one of the superintendents is issued, um, wrote up a document, outlined all their mitigation steps, which are very similar to ours. They've done a little bit of mitigation stuff with the public exception. Um, and sent it to a staff member at IDPH. And, uh, also, well, you know what I'll say, it's not about this, they were talking about the six-foot rule and some other things. Um, and the IDPH person said, you're, you're within our guidance. Now, they didn't bring up quarantine because IDPH tells you that you're supposed to follow your local health department guidance. Well, that's Cook County. Cook County has not yet accepted us or changed that guidance. They, in fact, I know, I think you talked to Michelle at the county.
Always, often.
And I know some of us were on a call with the county less than two weeks ago, and they said that hasn't changed. Um, we've heard rumblings that it might change with vaccination, I don't really know or not, but.
Because that would make a big difference, a big difference, you know?
Yeah, it would make a huge difference, right? Um, I've agreed, and we're, there are a lot of us, there are a lot of us who are waiting because we're hoping the guidance changes. I, I, I understand that strategy. Um, I, I'd like to wait too, but I also have families and, and teachers who are gonna make or not make plans. And, um, spring break's not that far away. Um, so, uh, we'd like to come to a decision pretty quick and communicate it. Um, what I'd like to do is if I could find that strategic decision that if I reversed it, or not reversed, it's not the right, if I revised it in a certain way, it would cause no further disruption, it would only enhance. I don't know what that is yet, because there's no way, I don't have a crystal ball. I will say this though, unrelated to quarantine, um, we are hoping that IDPH and the county will issue us something back saying, if you're doing these things, you're still gonna be within, um, our concept of you're following guidance. Because a lot of us are asking like, the six-foot rule, what are you real, you know, what are you saying? If we're doing all these things, because the original six-foot rule was, that was the only thing you were talking about. But if you're doing a bunch of other things, does it, is it the same or not? So we're waiting to find out what the state's gonna say about that. Uh, but I've heard nothing else about the travel guidance. The, the only thing I have heard, which is outlined here, is, and this is where we would propose a deviation because we think it's manageable now. CDC and the state will allow, uh, I should say CDC will allow, um, to take a fourteen-day quarantine and reduce it to a ten-day quarantine automatically for adults. They'll allow it to go from ten days to seven days if within a window you get a negative test, which is why we have that testing option here. We believe it's acceptable in this circumstance to apply that to our students too for this time. Um, and there's disagreement, CDC's fine with that, uh, CCDPH is not as fine with that. Um, and we feel like we're on solid enough ground to follow that through. So that's where we, you know, came up with this particular thing. But you still have to quarantine, you just, and you gotta get the tests, and so we really need to do that.
Hey, uh, do we expect, or has there been any revisions to the guidance in relation to vaccines?
No, not yet, that's what we're hoping. Everybody's thinking like, okay, if I've got my staff vaccinated, does that change how, like, the dynamic works? Um, I will tell you, when we surveyed staff about spring break, no, when we surveyed staff about schedules, um, a consistent piece of feedback, which was outlined in the memo, is, I might feel differently about modified onsite and remote, or in a hybrid, if I were vaccine, you know, vaccinated. And so we do feel it changes that discussion. Um, but we've got no guidance on a change in quarantine discussion right now.
So would it help us move along if we ask the question a little bit differently and said, why not do option one?
Right, yeah, I mean, uh, yeah, I think, I think that's kind of where we are right now as a team is, uh, and I think Matt said it best, is like, listen, we've been safe, clear, following a path that highlights what is safe about what we're doing. And why wouldn't we not continue with that path? Uh, I do think it's just, I wanted to put this out there because there are other paths, wisely or not, that are being explored, that we're gonna hear about. And then our families don't, you know, eighty percent of them are gonna be here that week and don't want to be remote. And, um, so I thought it was important to make sure you're clear that, like, we're not ignoring any of that. We're not just coming and saying this is the only thing that's out there. Um, but I agree with you that this is the clearest, most direct and safest, uh, response.
And the most certain.
And the most certain, right.
Well, the case, I mean, any experience I have is anecdotal, but with winter break and the two weeks that most schools had quarantine and after that, we saw a lot of people staying out of town for the remote period of quarantine, so it was a learning all the time. So the, how did we deal with that? I mean, did we have families who specifically told us they had done that? Or were we worried about?
So, yeah, as I know here, it's the honor system.
Yes.
The whole thing is the honor system, by the way, like.
Doesn't matter if the vaccine is the honor system.
Yeah, it doesn't matter which, well, the vaccine, I can get a card from you that says that I got vaccinated, but, but the whole thing, whether we do testing or not, when you come back, it relies on you telling me the truth about what you did and where you were. So we had families after winter break who told us, yeah, we didn't come back to here. And they said, okay, you gotta stay out until here. We definitely had families who didn't say anything, but did the exact same thing and just came back. Do I know who they were? I, I, I'm sure a teacher might be able to tell us because, you know, Johnny, third grader, talked about what he did in Florida two days ago. Right? Um, so this is a reality of school all the time. Um, and this begs the question is, you know, do you operate under the assumption of the, of the worst behavior or the right behavior? Um, and we have to, that's why it's called the honor system. So, um, there's nothing we can do to prevent it. However, we do think it's an incentive by offering this testing to get tested and be sure, and we're offering it to everybody. So there's just another incentive for community members to be, they'll come back, yeah.
Sorry, Jamie, I just had a quick follow-up from, okay. If that April eighth, ninth testing is mandatory, then I think you're logical. If it's voluntary for students and staff, I, I, I always question, um, why do it in a sense?
Yeah.
So if you get seventy percent of people to test, does that really provide any protection? I mean, I don't get me wrong, I'm the one that also believes any testing is good testing, but I wouldn't mean at this point in the discussion toward making it mandatory, of which many schools do. Some schools that are doing it every day.
Yeah.
If you miss that morning, you don't come to school the next day.
Sure. Yeah, that, and the daily testing, you're sure it's not a mandatory.
High Park Day School is the mandatory.
Yeah, so others still do it mandatory, so yeah, we, we could do it mandatory. I have a policy that you could draft and do that. Um, and, you know, I think the question there is, then what you're saying is, to your point, um, if you want to come back to school on April twelfth, you have to have tested, uh, April eighth and ninth. Uh, now, I will just say one other thing, and that is, um, if they don't, you know, then you have to figure, well, what's the date at which I do allow you to come back? So the assumption is April fourth, which is the last Sunday of spring break, is the kind of point at which we're calculating from. And that would bring you back on April, um, like, the Wednesday of that week. So the question is, you know, maybe I just wait it out, and I'm just out two more days, and it's not a big deal. And if we're in hybrid, then it's really like one more onsite day. So that, that's the other question, is that worth doing or not?
Well, this is my question, we could go along with this idea, but if your staff are traveling, we don't have enough subs to operate at school. So it doesn't matter, we just won't be able to do it for anybody that week.
That April fifth through April ninth, correct, yeah, that would be a remote week.
Okay, so first, okay, I got it.
Yeah, number two there.
The plan is it would be.
If it's remote, you need to be.
You're kind of factoring that in. Yeah, so the one thing we can do, by the way, and we did this before, is we said to staff, you have to be doing remote from home if you travel, or if you're telling me you didn't travel, which I actually feel my staff, you know, you can come in and do a remote. You might just say you have to do remote from home that week, right? Um, and.
This is where I fundamentally have a problem though, it's like, we're basically saying, you can go on your vacation and the kids have to pay the price by staying home. They can't come into school.
Well, there's, there's, yeah, so I was explaining this to Rick before, right? So here's the dilemma, and this is where we differ from any other sector. And if we had the solution, I wouldn't need to do any of this. And the solution works like, or the problem works like this. So I can't legally prevent you from going on break, right? And I don't know that I actually want to get into that position anyway. Um, because that, then, then the flip side's true, families can go on break and do it, but you're telling teachers they can't. Um, unless you wanted to incentivize it somehow, then you got, that's a whole nother issue. However, so if I go on break, uh, and I have to quarantine, so if I got a sub for you, you would get charged sick days for those days that you're out. Now, I told Rick I have to review the MOU to see if they get to access the sick bank through, you know, because FICRA runs out March thirty-first. So they have no more FICRA that they can access. They would have to access their own sick days or COVID sick bank days based on the MOU, which I'm not sure applied to this. But let's say they have to do their own sick days, right? I still have the same problem, which is I don't have anybody to teach the kid. So I, now I have two other choices. I could zoom the teacher at home into the classroom with an aide or a sub there, in which case the teacher's teaching. So now what am I doing? I mean, I, I can't charge them a sick day for that. We've done this before because the.
We can't do it.
Right, we had to, but the other reason is, the, the choice is this or maybe nothing, or this or something that's not even as good as zooming them into the kids. And so the third choice is, everybody in that class goes remote with the teacher. They're up, they all go home, and.
Because then you have the problem that Gil brings up, that people just extend their vacations longer.
They could, right, which by the way, they could do no matter what, even if we go, but, but I'm saying on a class-by-class basis, right? Jamie, third grade teacher says, I'm quarantined for a week because I was in Florida. And I say, well, all of Jamie's students are going home for a week to learn. But all Assumet's kids get to come in because you didn't quarantine. Okay, so there's a huge problem there. I will tell you, that's what one district I know is, like, that's their plan right now.
Which part of that is the plan?
Which part of that is the plan?
Right, I do that.
My situation is driving the outcome.
Yeah, the situation's just driving that outcome, and they're not, they're, they're gonna let that outcome be the outcome. And so, you know, I, I, you know, I don't, I, I can't say that that's an impossible outcome to allow, like, you could, you could allow that. Do I think that the outcome I would recommend for one week's worth of whatever we're talking about? I don't think that's a good idea. Especially, I mean, the winners and losers, the issue of that, you have people at each other's throats, bad for morale, bad for everything. Um, so, you know, I think the only.
That's why these teach, these districts are changing, making, designating staff essential. Because if you get out of that problem, you can make the, the families.
Yeah, you don't though, that's the thing, that's fake. There is actually no guidance that says essential workers get out of travel quarantine. It's, it's not in the guidance anywhere.
Really?
Yeah.
Correct. But I don't know what's going on.
But what, what do you, if you go to Florida? What's the difference that if I go and hang out with Gil all weekend long?
I'm just gonna tell you what the CDC says and the IDPH, and that is, the, the travel to other areas with COVID at your level or higher increases the likelihood. One reason is because you just said, I'm going to hang out with somebody. You're not even supposed to be hanging out with anybody.
Yeah, but I mean, it, it, but on weekends, I could be hanging out with everybody and all of a sudden I come.
But then I imagine, Dan, I imagine it's more about the flights, like, you know, no states have worse number, you know, you looked at the map a couple of weeks ago, we were all red except for Hawaii. But, um, it's, it's the mode of point of travel.
But if you drive, how about that, if you drive.
But now you're getting into a bunch of loopholes.
Yeah, yeah. Plus, they've also, I think what they've actually done is they've just identified basically statistically the increased likelihood of getting it with people who travel, right? So in other words, they're not necessarily, because they, now you can break it apart, you can break apart all the things that happen to travel that contribute to that. I think they're just doing the numbers and saying, we know that people who travel come back and are more likely to see a spread as a result. are more likely to see a spread as a result, so we don't want that to happen. And I certainly get letters from people saying, I, I'm traveling to so and so, and all I'm doing is sitting in a cabin for four days and, you know.
Right.
I wrote that, you know.
I've gotten more than one from, yeah, more than one.
I traveled to see people who had COVID.
Yeah.
So, but, you know, given what's gone on all this year, one week of remote is not the end of the world, and it buys us a lot of certainty. I mean, the last thing these families and our teachers need is not knowing what's gonna happen.
Right.
I would like uncertainty. No, but, and, you know, the idea of zooming a teacher into a classroom, to me, sounds cool, and is that kind of the only effective way to teach?
Well, listen, I mean, let's look at the panoply of ways we've been doing it. So I, I, I think, I think teachers have done a nice job of this. I'm thinking of Ms. Johnson and Ms. Abrams and.
And Mrs. Byrd.
And Mrs. Byrd.
It's better than the alternative.
Yeah.
Right, right.
I meant the alternative is they're all at home sharing an experience on screen.
Well, I think there's two things, I mean, one is the person who is there to facilitate the things that the teacher's having them do is different when they're, than when they're isolated and they're in their living room.
Without a teacher there, yeah.
And two, they, you know, I know it sounds like a small thing, but they get PE, and that's actually a big deal right now.
Well, and families get childcare.
Right, and, and families get childcare. I mean, there's one district, all they're doing is all the kids go to school, and then they get on Zoom with the teacher. And so I don't, I don't understand that model, but.
Follow the science.
You know.
I feel like we're in the last five days of an antibiotic prescription, where you're feeling better.
I don't want to keep taking.
You're kind of like doing, I mean, it's worked.
You already finished the prescription.
It worked after winter break, it's a no brainer as far as I'm concerned.
Well, and one last thing, Katie, is we're not really factoring in the fact that you and your team have been so effective at preventing transmission in the building. You know, it's a little bit of like bring it on, even when we had COVID cases, we were fine.
Yeah.
So an extra week, throw in a mandatory test, you know, I, I think you're covering your bases and.
I think, I think, I, we think so, too. I mean, that was kind of the impulse, was like, wait a minute, we've gone all this way doing this, yeah, we want to be back, but what we, option one is consistent with all of that, the other options are not consistent with all that, why go inconsistent now, was kind of what my colleague said. I think unfortunately sometimes that works the opposite for people, they're like, hey, listen, it's safe, we're fine, right? It's kind of the antibiotic, and I feel great. You go out for that one long night, you had three days left, you stopped taking it, and you wake up sick again in three days, so.
Oh, wait, but there's the African strain, the UK.
Yeah, so, okay, I think this guidance helps. I do think one thing, some, some things we're gonna work out are just the testing thing. Like I said, this company's super competent and confident, like, you know, I could come back to you to talk about, I mean, I think I mentioned to you before that I was not sold on surveillance testing on the way it would work for us, for size. They do only PCR tests, but you can set up with them for surveillance testing. I don't know if we're big enough to do it. They do it once a week at a more than gross school.
Are they a saliva sample test?
Yeah, I know. That's part of the problem with it being, you know, but it's weekly, so I'm gonna kind of explore that option because if at one or both of the schools, we were able to go to modified onsite daily, that mitigation fact might actually play a good role in mitigating, you know, having more kids in the building.
We're doing that in school.
Yeah, right.
Kane, why that, early on, they were saying we were getting a lot of false nightage with kids because getting all the way up their nose was a problem, but, and is there something about the saliva test that some schools are doing that you don't like?
A totally different test, actually.
Right, I mean, we can find the second.
Oh, I like this one because it's a PCR test and it's free.
I like how you threw in PCR test.
PCR, and it's free. The saliva tests are not authorized for, for actual diagnosis.
And I would keep pushing Cook County that they need, it's not fair, they need to give you that, I mean, they may not, but like.
Oh, they've heard it from us, but the people making the decisions, I, I won't, I won't go into my issues with the county right now, but.
It's really wrong.
It is.
It's wrong.
Look at all this stuff we do.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it is wrong.
If we don't have a full smoke background, I mean, this is ridiculous.
Well, right, we're back to kind of the, encapsulate the whole experience, right? Superintendents have been going through this, and, you know, I think a lot of us struggle because some of us are trying to come up with rationale to get the F when we want, which I understand. It sounds like it, but then when you scratch it, you're like, that doesn't make any sense. And then others are trying to follow the guidance as much as possible, but it doesn't get us, get us the outcome we want.
Well, and you still rely again on the honor system, and so, yeah, all of it.
Yeah, all, yeah, so. So thank you for that feedback, that is actually very helpful, and, and we as a team will debrief a little on that in the next couple of days, and we'll have some, we'll have a decision within the next couple of days that we'll communicate. I won't lie and tell you, I'm still hoping for some different guidance in the next couple of days, but.
And we won't lie and tell you you're likely to get it.
Are there any places that people can travel that are exempted? Oh, yes.
But that's as of right now.
Stop.
Yeah, but Jamie, that's as of right now. That can change.
Are you kidding me?
Huh?
That's crazy.
If someone had a career, you'd have to be on an airplane for eight hours.
You'll be, you'll be patient zero online.
You do have to get a test. You know, before you get on a plane and other things, so. Okay, so that's, that, that was very helpful, I appreciate that.
Yeah, some potential calendar changes.
Oh, yeah, so I thank you. So I did not have anything written at this time, but it goes with that last discussion, and, and it can come figuring a couple of different ways, and if I need to bring something in writing, I'll try to do that for some clarity, but we have available to us three or four what are called remote learning planning days that the state gave us beginning of this year in consideration of pandemic. And what that means is I can have a day where the staff just plans and gets ready for stuff, either a change in schedule or whatever, and it counts, it doesn't count against their attendance, so it doesn't make your year longer, right? So the downside is the kids aren't in school, that's, that's one. But the upside is we're not adding a day at the end. So one, a couple of things to think about that we've been thinking about is, one, we could end up shortening the year by a couple of days, or we could put these, you know, for instance, on one side of spring break to either try to mitigate and do the testing window different, so it could look different, I have to think about it. But one thing I've been thinking about in particular is the Wednesday and Thursday before spring break are parent teacher conferences, those are Zoom. And then the Friday, we actually were able to make a non-attendance day, which we might make a remote learning planning day. But what we could also do is move conferences to the Monday and Tuesday of that week, and then make the Wednesday and Thursday remote learning planning days. And you kind of create a ramp where staff's not in the building from Wednesday on, and families aren't coming on Wednes, nobody's onsite Wednesday and Thursday either. And I'm just trying to think through in a way if we communicated, would that get us back sooner, could it get us back sooner? And I, I just don't have any concrete things about it, but as we talked about this window of how do we construct spring break, I didn't know if there are any thoughts about that, or if there were just thoughts about, hey, we can kind of end the year two days sooner and we can start some planning for next year with the staff based on what we know we'll be doing and things like that. Those days were really meant, the, the other thing to think about that we'll talk about is if we go to a modified onsite schedule, putting them right around spring break on the back end is days that the staff then plans for, okay, I'm gonna have kids onsite every day, maybe 16 kids in a room, that's what I'm gonna use it for. I just wanted to put it out there in case, you know, from what you're hearing, from what you're experiencing, you thought there might be a good use of those days in light of the calendar.
I had a question before you brought all that up, that made me move, maybe in the opposite direction, but since we're doing teacher, parent teacher conferences via Zoom, why not do them all in the same day instead of having two half days? I, I mean, I, I understood like the fatigue that comes.
I was gonna say, have you been a middle school teacher? It's like, what?
I played one on TV, but.
Yeah, when you have 130, our allied arts teachers have 130 students, or you need 95 in a day, that's, I don't even think, I couldn't even, yeah, I don't.
All right, well, that answers that.
I feel like contractually, we split them up between two days because you can't, the amount of time that you, the amount of time that it takes for conferences, they have to allot for conferences, you can't actually do all in one day and still allow the other aspects of the contract, and so in doing a half day, then you still allow for the afternoon to have, right, do your lunch, but those are the contract, and then work the other hours in the evening, you're really just shifting hours.
Yeah, okay, and then, so I guess for clarity of your point, I lost you at some point, would the end result be that that Thursday is another institute day by whatever name?
Uh, yeah, we could make that Wednesday and Thursday, or just that Thursday.
And then conferences would be Monday.
Monday and Tuesday of that week.
Which would still be half days.
Still half days, yeah.
When is the schedule going to be finished for the teachers to have in their hands?
Which schedule?
The new schedule that does.
For next year?
Oh, yeah, yeah, for next year.
Uh, it won't be by then.
So then maybe at the end of the year would be better.
Yeah, maybe at the end.
They've got the schedule.
Yeah, that's a good idea, actually, yeah, yeah, that's a very good point. They'll see the schedule for the survey next week, but that might not be its final form and, you know, so that's a very good point, thank you, you know, that's something to remember to not, not maybe spend those days now, save it for that.
And I guess my advice would be, we don't want to take any more days away from the kids.
Yeah, that, that, yeah, that's the other consideration, too, right? So it's something that's available, I just want to make sure, because the calendar is, the strange thing about the law right now is, I actually can change the calendar without your consent, believe that or not, but typically what we do is, I amend the calendar at the end of the year based on any changes we made, you approve it, then we send it, and whatever, which I still plan on doing, by the way, but rather than have you surprised by what I did, I try to make sure you get some thoughts into it. And I might revisit this again just for conversation, so.
For the record, the only thing that impresses my childrens that I know of are calendars and things, so.
Well, that bring, that's a great segue, Gloria, because the only action item tonight is the, oh, no, not.
That's a report.
Yeah, the report, Learning Schedule Committee and Learning Schedule Changes.
No, there's an action.
No, there's an action.
There's a schedule with action.
Yeah, okay, yeah, but it's after this.
It's after.
It's after this, yeah, I'm getting ahead of myself, so. I do want to talk about the learning schedule and learning schedule changes for next year, and then if Ms. Taylor or Ms. Hutchison want to jump in and just add anything, we're not sharing documents at this point because, you know, we're, we're waiting until they're up and they're public, and everybody gets to look at them at the same time, but I do want to thank everybody for Tuesday night's meeting. I thought it was a really productive meeting, we got a lot done in two hours, everybody was super engaged, we had a great group, and so it put us on the right track, which, you know, that first meeting is like, you're worried it might get off track, but it didn't at all. And so what they, what the groups did is they provided us draft advantages and disadvantages on the schedules, and then draft survey questions. And so over the weekend, I will be turning those into an actual survey with draft advantages and disadvantages, and then the committee electronically will give me feedback before I send that out with the screencast the week of the 15th, where the screencast will be like the intro, hey, here's the schedules here to help you understand them, because no normal person just looking at it would get it, so.
You have to walk through it.
You gotta walk through it, and then they'll take the survey after that.
Can I suggest we might split into two between the schools, because, for instance, last year I would have had no experience at Mary Murphy, and might not, it, it might have prevented me from wanting to do the surveys.
So let me ask you, the flip side, if you're, let's say, a fifth grade parent, and your kid's going to Mary Murphy next year, and I don't ask you.
No, I think you send both surveys.
So just send them separate.
And give me the options, so I'm not looking at a mile long survey.
Okay, that's, that's, that makes sense. So, yeah, that's where we are right now, and I feel like we've got the bases for exactly where we want to go. I don't know if Jess or Jamie, you have anything else you want to say about the meeting and how it went, or what you heard, what you learned, or?
I thought it was really productive. I thought all of the different constituencies brought meaningful ideas to the table. I thought everyone was really respectful and really pragmatic about everything.
Yep, yep.
There were things that they understood were big change, little change, things that maybe worked better and work, don't work as well, and I, I just thought it was a, it was a really helpful meeting.
I'm so glad to hear that.
Did you feel they needed a lot of context as to why the schedule was built that way?
Uh, some people asked a few questions, who were probably newer to the district, but, I mean, people had a lot of, I mean, the teachers for sure understood the history of the schedule very well, and they knew the things that worked real well and things that could be probably improved. I think there was definitely a desire by staff for things to be equitable that was expressed, and I think choice and was expressed by parents and staff, so like, I, I just, I really enjoyed being part of it.
That's good.
As a, as a testament to what a wacky year this has been, the number of different ways we've said, the old schedule, no, no, the current, no, and then the hilarity is like even someone like Stephanie Rick who has lived, the current schedule, the typical and usual schedule was like, what? We used to, we used to have PE from two to three, and I was like, yes. So it was like the longest year ever, and we all really needed that recap, but like, I thought the nice part was from, from Kane and I standpoint, it, it led us to believe like, okay, we need to, we do need to do a little bit of front loading so that parents understand, especially our new parents, that this schedule is not the usual schedule, so that they can understand like, you can't identify advantages or things that we consciously made look different if you don't actually know what the old schedule used to look like. And so we're trying to figure out how to.
How to do that without having to explain the entire old schedule?
Getting people confused.
Yeah, so I, I think, you know, we'll do that in the screencast a little bit, and I think the big thing is, yeah, just kind of what are the relative advantages and disadvantages of this schedule?
Yeah.
With some highlights of, it used to be like this, but.
It is, lady, yes.
Was there a sense that we still value planning time, that this allowed for more flexibility?
Oh, they still have plenty of.
No, no, I know they do, I'm just saying for new parents, I remember when Matt first told me how many, you know, planning time there was, there was a, a misunderstanding. Do you feel like that was a topic at all, or everyone just?
It didn't really come up.
Oh, that was a Mary Murphy, but I don't, I think people were, were not worried that they were going to lose money.
No, yeah, I don't think.
Well, I could see the worry going both ways. I, the, the, I could see, parents often react, they only have X amount of time in front of the kids, that's what they do with the rest, and we know teachers look at it the other way sometimes.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. We didn't hear startling responses either way in that regard, some questions about instructional minutes, Jess has started to do some, like, beginning math on it, but it's kind of.
It's new math, Kate.
It's new math, sorry.
Is it University of Chicago?
Amen.
Singapore.
But, but I do think, you know, we do have to measure like, how much do we want to go in the rabbit hole of, it used to be like this, because that's not always a good explanatory approach either, and, because that assumes that that was our only choice.
Or a good idea.
I don't see the advantage to going into the old schedule at all, you know, here it is, some disadvantages might be, we could wish for, some advantages are, you don't even have to say, this is the way it was.
Right.
And I actually think that we are, we strategically. And I actually think that we are, we strategically make the right time to do this because everyone is so used to their schedule changing, people are just more open and flexible because we're conditioned to it.
Out of necessity, yeah. So, so really, oh, so the survey is about getting fresh eyes on it, and how does this impact you?
Yeah, we, we got that, I think, and we, and I think Jamie used the word pragmatic, people, I mean, I emphasized it at the beginning, but I don't think I even needed to about, it's not personal, it's not agenda driven. And so people came in with a really mature look at it, um, and really kinda wanted to understand how would X work, you know, whatever it is. And that's great, um, and then gave us disadvantages that are very consistent with what we would anticipate. Um, and so I look forward to the next steps, I mean, I think there's gonna be a lot of data to pull apart, but I do think, um, we're on the right track and it's due to the folks who were on the committee, so. Yeah, it's a good first step. Um, and so with that, we do have an action item, the twenty-one, twenty-two calendar. Um, I did bring this forward last time, it's got, um, no changes, there were no requests for changes or suggestions. Uh, it's a pretty typical calendar. Um, it is aligned to, you know, New Year, time shift on New Year's beginning and winter and spring breaks. Um, and, uh, other than that, we just need action on it whenever the board's ready to do so.
I have one clarifying question, we'll change it to the one, anything. Uh, so Columbus Day has just gone from our calendar, go and tow.
Uh, yep, that's how I found it and that's what I would continue to recommend, actually.
I agree, it just kind of happened without notice, so. All right, good, thank you.
I guess my only comment, and I'm happy to vote if you want to, is align it as much as you can with New Year.
Well, the beginning and the breaks are.
Yeah.
New Year, and I have a student there and I have another one who's gonna go, is really liberal with some of their breaks, to be honest. And that's, they have their reasons and that's nice, but I wouldn't encourage that for younger learners particularly, uh, with this, you know, with continuity. Um, I don't even encourage it with my own kid, when I come home one day, I'm like, what are you doing home? You didn't have school today. It was such and such a break, you know, so, um, but our winter, our spring, um, and our beginning are aligned though. So otherwise, um, you know, we, we have to look at other things, and I'll give you an example, you know, which is, it's worth a conversation, I think I mentioned it last time, you know, uh, Sears School took a week after Thanksgiving and a week after spring break additional, and they still end up roughly the same time. They took zero other holidays, no state, no federal, no, uh, religious.
You were saying that you, you like that model.
Well, I like it actually, I like the year round model, I like the, like the four, ten week period.
Could we really have that discussion sometime?
Huh?
Could we really have that discussion sometime?
Uh, that would be a strategic planning discussion, where we'd go to the community and part of this vision for the school district would be, what should school look like, right? What should the year look like, what should the day look like? Um, and so, cause that's a big change.
Yeah.
But, you know, there are a lot of year round models that are like, you know, you, you go on, you go ten weeks, you're off a week, you go ten weeks, you're off a week. Uh, you build it around the other breaks, um, and it's better for learning.
Are they, are they, again, for strategic planning, but there's data that shows you that's a beneficial way to do it?
Well, you reduce learning loss in the summer is the best.
That's a, that's a.
Better socially.
Uh, yeah, it's true. I mean, here's the way I put it, I will tell you as a lifelong teacher and educator that there are key stress times in the school year. When school starts, when school ends, and ramping up the breaks. And they're like this emotionally. And the more you smooth that out, the less actual overall stress you'll have over the course of the year and the more you'll retain and the more effective you'll be and the more continuous your relationships will be, which is one of the key points that you're trying to foster. I'm all for summer break, but you can do quote unquote a year round school and still get six weeks off, right? Um, but we just have the nuclear area model. I call it factories built for farmers.
Yeah.
You know, like, a factory model during the day and a farm model on the calendar, you know, um, but that's something I, yeah, I think that'd be a great conversation.
Then the board needs to understand that there has to be an adjustment in the infrastructure because you can't have a year round model out of a West at this point.
Uh, yeah, you'd have to invest in, uh, air conditioning, if you want to, yeah.
Before we could talk about the new building.
I will.
Wow, that just got.
The board is really upset.
What were you saying?
Well, I will tell you, so just as a point to that, though, when we were, when I was in Lake Zurich, one of the selling points is we had a certain number of schools without air conditioning and a certain number with. We couldn't change the calendar, even have the conversation until the capital funds went into air conditioning in the buildings that didn't have it. Now they can have the conversation about starting earlier, ending before break, you know, that kind of thing. And so, but that was a selling point for the referendum that, that page was. So you, I know you're joking about a new building and whatever.
I'm not at all.
Yeah, about right now.
No, I'm saying, sorry, the target.
Yeah, but, but that's a realistic thing to talk about in, in those terms, uh, so. Um, so we just need action on the calendar, okay?
Okay.
Uh, I, I move. I move that board approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two calendar as presented.
Second.
Dr. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. McGory?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Aye.
Dr. Dar?
Aye.
Ms. Zavitz?
Aye.
Ms. Delante?
Aye.
Mr. Garvis?
Aye.
You, and we do have a closed session.
Oh, all right, I'll keep going. Uh, I move that the board convene in closed session for the purpose of, A, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint alleged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. B, the setting of a price for sale or lease of property owned by the public body. And C, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees.
Second.
Ms. Zavitz?
Yes.
Dr. Dar?
Aye.
Ms. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. McGory?
Yes.
Dr. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Garvis?
Aye.
Aye.
Second and second.
Our last board meeting...